Trying to start on time and end on time and things like this here. I want to honor your time. Thank you for coming out to our town hall meeting. I appreciate that. I know that there are many things that you can do with your time and the fact that you're here is important to me. I think it's a great sign of your commitment and your interest in our community and our police department, and so I'm glad to have you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to do a brief overview of things that have happened in the police department over the last year, maybe a few things to talk about that we will be doing in the coming year, and then open it up to you. And if you have questions, concerns, issues with the police department, this would be the time to ask them. I'll do my best to answer those questions. And if we can't get you an answer tonight, we will get you an answer very soon. So, thank you for being here. I'll start off with talking a little bit about the crime in Redlands, the crime stats for 2013 compared to 2012. In violent crime, we saw a slight decrease of 1.8% over the last year, so that part's good news. We saw a significant, in my mind, increase in property crime, about 6.4%. That's about 20 or 30 extra burglaries, 200 extra thefts that we saw in the city from last year compared to the year before. So, there's a number of things that we're doing, and I'll talk about those tonight, that we're taking as proactive measures to try to reduce that crime further. There are a number of reasons for that, but we're seeing an uptick. Other cities around here are also seeing that same uptick in crime. We are... If anybody needs a Spanish translator also, we have Natasha here. She can translate for you. Eddie, if you need that. Okay. And in addition to crime, our response time is fairly close to where we were last year. We were about five and a half minutes to the highest priority calls. In 2012, laughter went up to 5:48, so we lost a little bit of time on that. Part of that is an increased number of calls for service, the types of calls that we handled. Arrests were also up in the city. We had about 400 more arrests last year than the year before. It's about a 14% increase, so that's a significant increase in arrests compared to having the same number of staff. So, we've seen a pretty large increase in that. And then we're also well above the national average for clearance rates. We improved that again last year. We went from 54% clearance rates in 2012 to 59% last year. And in every Part 1 crime category, we're above the national average as far as our ability to clear crime. So, that speaks highly to the officers that we have, the detectives that we have at the Redlands Police Department. Some of the proactive measures that we're doing, one of the biggest things that is most exciting Lieutenant Martinez has implemented is the Tracker Program. You guys may have heard a little bit about that. We have been able to share that program in Colorado, Florida, a number of agencies in California, Nevada, and Minnesota. It is a program that we can put a tracking device into money, into pills, you know, like a pharmacy, into computers, into a lot of different things that we can use to track a suspect when he takes something. So, if you're at a store and they come in to rob the store, that can be placed in money so that they take that and we can track where they're going. We've made just recently our 90th arrest in using that Tracker Program. So, it is a very significant program for us to be able to help solve crime. We do different things in the community. We put out vehicles and computers and things out in places where we're having thefts, and then we see if somebody will take that. And if they do, then we can catch them. We had a case at CVS Pharmacy that was CVS, right? Where they had about eight different burglaries of OxyContin pills throughout the inland empire, Southern California area. And so Travis was able to plant that in a bottle there in case that place got hit, and it did. And we arrested the suspect, and we were able to tie him to all of those crimes in Southern California. And we did a case at Kohl's. We had our Kohl's rob. There was, I think he did 12 different cases in Southern California. Same guy was going to Kohl's in early morning hours and taking somebody inside and stealing the money. So, we were able to work with... Our crime analyst, Amy, was able to do some predictive analysis and looked at where this most likely would happen next. And then we had looked at being Riverside, so we worked with those agencies. We were able to meet with Kohl's. They bought some trackers. Some of the other agencies put out trackers in their area where we thought this might happen, and it did. And he did a robbery, and ironically, he was tracked back. He got off the freeway here in Redlands, and our people arrested him for that crime. We were able to tie him to all of those other robberies. So, that tracking program is very significant in our ability to catch people since officers can't be everywhere all the time. So, doing these types of technological things really helps us to stay on the cutting edge of being able to solve the increase in crime and do things like that that help our community out. We also started a Wild Year Away Program that also involves the Tracker. We can put it into a computer, give it to someone if they're going away for an extended period of time. They can put that in a prominent place in their house where it's like that if somebody comes into your house and they take that, then that's going to activate. And rather than you calling us when you get home and saying you had a burglary, we would be able to say, "Okay, the tracker went off. We can go track that person right at that time." So, that's something that we've been doing for a few months, and we've had a good response from the community for that. We've also implemented COPDots. I don't know if any of you have heard that. That's something that is a pin, like a marker pin, and when you take the cap off, you can put it on something just like a marker would, and it puts a microdot that's specific to you on that piece of property. So, if you have something stolen from your yard or from your house and it has this technology, this microdot on it, we have the tools then that the company has provided us that we can track that information. And if it has that on there, we can track it to where that person has, where the burglary or robbery or theft took place. So, that's something that you can pick up at Lowe's. It's... How much were those, Sean?
Thirty.
Thirty bucks for the marker, and then you just mark the things that you want to mark. It's, you know, it's not something that makes a big noticeable mark. It just puts that on, the microdot on the piece of item that you want to do. And then if we have that and something's stolen, we'll know who to track it back to.
What is that called again?
Called COPDots. We're also doing, using our volunteers to do an education program. There's some research that indicates that when we have a burglary in a specific area, that then within 500 feet of that area, there's likely to be another burglary within the next three days. So, based on that, we have provided some education material. Our volunteers then take that out to areas where we're having burglary problems and educate the neighbors around them so that we can try to avoid any further thefts in the area. A big part of our ability to deter those things is for people to make sure they lock their garage doors at night or when they're away, their houses, you know, not leave stuff out. All of those types of things help. So, we can do education with people to get them to do some of those things that help us. We also started what we call the Crime Response Unit last year. And so, when we have, you know, we use evidence-based policing ideals. When we have a hotspot, we'll send a group of people out to target that area, whether it's burglaries. The very first day that we did this, we'd been having a number of metal thefts, and they went out, the Crime Response Unit went out that night and made an arrest, a significant arrest on a metal theft suspect. So, we do that for those types of issues. We do that, we're doing that right now for traffic collisions. We've had an uptick in injury traffic collisions, so we're doing some enforcement around the traffic ideals in those areas where we've had problems, all to try to deter it. And then one thing that we're starting now that Commander Katrin is working on is a volunteer crime prevention unit. And so, in the next couple of months, we'll be able to kick that off, and they'll be doing some education. They'll be doing some other things to really try to help us prevent crime in our community, to try to get people on the front edge of not being a victim and doing things that would help you not to be a victim. We've instituted two regional programs that try to stretch our resources and tie those with other agencies. So, we have our airplane here. Is now we're doing a regional program with Colton Rialto in Fontana. What we get is we use our airplane. When they need it, they'll call us, and we'll go over to their things that they have. And then at night, the Fontana Police Department sends their helicopter to patrol our city. So, it's a good trade-off for us because our plane can't fly at night and their helicopter doesn't fly during the day, so we're able to share those resources and stretch the resources a little bit for our community and the areas in between. As you guys all recognize, criminals know no boundaries. They don't know the borders of Redlands Island, Loma Linda, Yucatán, all of those things. So, they're going back and forth all the time committing crimes. So, the more regional impact we can have, I think the better off we'll be. We've also expanded our regional narcotics program. We have the Sheriff's Department and the City of Beaumont involved in that. So, again, that keeps us from having to man all of those positions. We're able to utilize other people from other departments and then share those resources throughout the area where we have criminals going back and forth and committing crime and doing drug sales. Some of the things that we're doing to try to create greater efficiency are paperless reporting system. Shana is doing that program. We've got most of that implemented now so that the officer can utilize his MDC, the computer that's in the car, and do the report right on there and send that in electronically so that we don't have to do as much paper reporting. So, obviously, that saves paper, saves ink, all of those types of things, and then it creates greater efficiency because for Shana's records folks, they don't have to then take the report and scan it into the system and then do the quality control and get that sent in. It all can go right into the system. So, that'll be a positive thing. We've also started an alarm tracking program that has reduced significant number of man-hours that we used to have to actually manually go into the system and find the alarms that were going off and were false alarms. And now we can do that with a fairly easy click of the button on the computer. We've tried to increase our online reporting through CopLogic. If you go to our website, you'll see that on there that somebody can report. If you have a crime that's occurred that doesn't have follow-up, doesn't have suspect information, then you can report that right online. That saves us time, it saves you time. If it might be a busy night and we have an extended response time for a report, you can do that right on the computer and not have to wait for an officer to come out if you don't need them. And then we also have the ability to do online traffic reports, whereas when you request a traffic report, if you're involved in a collision or an insurance company asks for a traffic report, we used to have to manually go and get that and then copy that and then send that out or give it to the person. Now, you can go right online and you can download that traffic report right off of the online system. So, it saves the insurance company's time, it saves you time if you want to do that. There's a fee attached to that that goes to the company that does that, but it's very nominal and it saves most people's time for being able to do that. You can still come and get a report if you need to, and we'll do that for you, but this is something that has saved a significant amount of time, so it's an efficiency measure. One of the things that, you know, I've tried to do since I've been here in the last two and a half years is really promote accountability and responsibility for our officers. And we've demanded that. We've done a lot of training with our guys. We've done a lot of things with them to make sure that they're going to be doing the type of job that you can be proud of. And so, we're really pushing service orientation, what it means to be a service-oriented leader. And I think that has been reflected in some of the information we've captured in that the number of citizen complaints have gone down in the last three years. In 2011, it was 13. In 2012, it was 10, and last year it was 8. So, we see that coming down. I think that's a good indicator for us as a department to make sure that we are doing a satisfactory job when we're out there and that officers are doing the things that they need to do to provide the level of service that we expect of them out of the community. The police department is also in charge of animal control, which is a fairly large animal to try to get hands around and a lot of stuff going on. Very little staff. But the great thing about that program is that the people in this community really have a heart for the animals and for our shelter. And so, we just recently did a fundraiser in a pretty short period of time. They raised $19,000 that now the city does not have to pay towards spaying and neutering and those types of things that go on at the shelter. So, that is a tribute to our community. It's a great thing to be able to do and augment those costs so that the city doesn't have to and we can maintain a no-kill shelter for our community. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, you guys have probably seen things in the paper or in social media about the vehicle, MRAP vehicle that we acquired from the military surplus. And I wanted to be able to set the record straight on that so that everybody had accurate information. In some of the social media and things that have been put out, information has been put out that we are trying to militarize the police department. That is not accurate. That's misinformation. I have no desire as a chief to militarize our police department. I am committed to community policing principles, and I want our guys to be able to provide the highest level of service that we can in every area. It is unfortunate, but you see in the news every day the things that happen around our country. The FBI put out a recent report that says since 2009, there's been on average one active shooter incident a month in this country. So, every month, somebody is having that type of an incident. And those things don't just happen in faraway places or in big cities. They happen in cities very much like Redlands. And so, I want us to be prepared for those types of things. When you look at things that have happened in Newtown, Connecticut, that's a smaller city than Redlands. You look at the things that happened around Columbine in Columbia, Maryland, three weeks ago, they had a mall shooting. All of those things are happening in cities very much like Redlands. USA Today did a report recently on mass casualty incidents where four or more people are killed in a single incident. And those things that happened in Covina, in Temecula, in Victorville, those things are happening all around us. Just three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, a sheriff's deputy was ambushed up in the high desert. In this city, back in the late 90s, we had a campus-on-campus shooting at a school. Just several months ago, we had an improvised explosive device placed underneath a car that was at Citrus Valley, Citrus Plaza over here. So, those types of things, Redlands is an immune, and those types of things are happening all around us. And so, as the chief of police, I would believe, I believe that I would be malfeasant not to do everything that I can to protect this city. And that's my commitment to you. That's my commitment to this community, for us to be able to do everything we can to keep the officers of our community safe and to keep the citizens of this community safe. If we're unfortunate enough to have an incident like that, I want to be able to respond in minutes, not hours. I want to be able to go out and rescue people right away. I want my officers to minimize their risk as much as they can when they do these types of calls. You know, we had just recently, this month, we've had the anniversary of the shooting just up the road from here, not very far, and where Deputy McKay was killed and where Deputy Collins was severely injured in the shooting. We had one of our officers on scene at the time of that shooting. One of our officers responded with that group of people, and he was there. And had that person come down the hill, they would have ended up in our city. And so, as the chief of police, I want to make sure that we're prepared for any of those types of incidents. Now, hopefully, this will be something we never have to use, but to get a $650,000 vehicle at no cost to the city, I think is a very good thing for us. And yes, we will spend a little bit of money on that to paint it and to outfit it for our purposes, but it'll all be drug, asset seizure money. No general fund money will be spent. And I want to make sure that we do everything we can to be prepared for any incident that might come up for us. So, I hope that sets the record straight, and you guys are more than welcome to ask questions.
I'm not familiar with the vehicle. Can you describe what it is?
What it's called is a mine-resistant ambush vehicle. It's something that they use in the military. It's like an armored car. And so, you know, there's been information put out there that there's a machine gun mounted on there. That's not true. There was a machine gun on there. We didn't take it with any kind of weaponry on it. We just got the vehicle. So, it's a large armored car. It's, I don't know if you've seen other agencies that have Bearcats. It's similar to that type of a SWAT vehicle, but it's something that's bulletproof. So, if we send our officers into the line of fire, then if somebody's shooting at us, it will stop those bullets from penetrating. And so, if we have an active shooter or something like that, we can take it in, pull people out in a safe manner, and keep our officers safe while they're doing that.
Seems like a great idea.
I appreciate it. I think it'll be a good thing for us and as long as, I think part of that is just getting the right information out, and hopefully, people will take that information for face value.
What's your biggest concern about crime in Redlands these days? You didn't say anything about drugs, but maybe you could talk a little bit about that, but maybe what other concerns might you have about our safety? I mean, what would be your priority list, I guess, what drugs in particular are concerned about? Because I've heard a lot about heroin, you know, and Eric gives you heroin and all of that, and what's happening here in town now with that?
Some of that has gotten a little bit better. There's not as much drug seen as there was at one time. When I came here, we had just had eight heroin overdose deaths in about a 10-month period of time. And as a response to that, we had our narcotics team do a very large heroin investigation. We ended up getting, I think it was 20 indictments. We did it all federally so that they got more time and there were higher penalties for them. But after we started that program and started taking the heroin off the street from our local dealers, we didn't have any heroin overdose deaths for a fairly long period of time. We've had a few since that was over. You know, there's always a coming-back period, but it's not nearly as bad as it was back in 2010, 2011. You know, what happens is that some of these young people, and it's not what you would normally think of as typical heroin, the people that you normally associate with doing heroin weren't. These were 18 to 28-year-olds, all middle-class type families and kids. What had happened is they would get into their parents' cabinets and start taking OxyContin or get it from their friends and start taking that, and then they'd get addicted to that, and then as a result of that, they graduated up to heroin. And so, you know, all of those types of things, those things are preventable from a family's perspective if you can make sure that your stuff is locked away and the kids don't have access to it. We still do have the regional narcotics team. They still are out making arrests regularly, but the drugs aren't nearly as bad as they have been in the past. But we will continue to, you know, put out our narcotics team and have the investigations that they do. One of our officers was assigned to a DEA task force. He just wrapped up a very large, second very large investigation on narcotics. It was a nationwide investigation, went back to a number of other states. And so, that is still in the process of getting resolved and getting indictments, but we are doing our best to stay on top of those issues. Other questions? You guys are letting me off way too easy.
Why don't we see more in the papers as to what's happening in the community here through the grapevine?
Yeah, you know, I think we have a PIO, and he does a pretty good job of putting out arrests and those kinds of things. Something that we just started last week is to try to use social media a little bit better and put out information through those venues that is the good news. You know, it's easy to hear the bad news. It's easy to report on the bad news. We don't often hear about the good news, and so, we're trying to do a better job of putting some of that information out. And we'll continue to try to improve doing that.
If you hear what's going on in your neighborhood, you hear more of the word, I think.
Yeah, well, you're right. And that's what it takes is for communities and neighborhoods to be brought together to, you know, for that common cause, looking out for each other and making sure that we're keeping each other informed and those types of things. But we are trying to increase our ability to do that more effectively. And we did, I'll be here in just a second. In one way, we just implemented a reverse 911 program so that if we have a major incident or something happens, we will be able to use that system to call out to you all in the community in a specific area and say, "Hey, this just happened there. Look out, lock your doors," or, you know, "We're having a major disaster," or something like that. It'll be used for major type incidents, but it'll be a tool that we can use to get information out to people very, very quickly.
If somebody gets their furniture removed from their house, that ever comes out in the paper?
It depends. You know, sometimes the paper reports on some of those things. Most often, we put out press releases, not when that happens, but when we arrest someone, and then that information will be put out. And then with our volunteer program, we do go out into those neighborhoods and try to educate folks that something is going on in their neighborhood to make sure that they're extra vigilant.
You have a great website, and I found, I learned about this from a member of your department called Crime Hacking. And you put in the agency, in this case, Redlands Police Department, and you get a map of Redlands, and you can scroll around to your area and you can see what's going on around you, and it's a great tool.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. That is a good tool, and it's a good way if you are online, have that ability, a good way to get information, see the types of crimes that are happening in and around different parts of the city. And that's, it's a free website, so you can go to that, crimehacking.com.
Crimehacking.com. And there's also free apps for iPad and iPhone and Android and all those two. And you can set it up and look at whatever time period you want and everything. And I could show you a demo too if you'd like to see it happen. You'd be the one to see it.
And may I add that I find that this area doesn't have as many hits as some of the other areas. I look at my old neighborhood and I go, "I'm glad I moved to Redlands."
You know, Redlands is much safer than most of the other cities around here. You know, that's a good thing for us. We do have to be vigilant to make sure that we maintain that because Redlands is looked at in a lot of ways as a target-rich environment because people here have things. And so, we arrest a lot of people from out of town, and then they, when we talk to them, they'll say that, yeah, you know, Redlands has things, we know the people have things, and we come here to do our crime because of those types of issues. And so, you know, we do always have to be vigilant about that and make sure that we're doing our best to fortify and harden the target so that we don't have people that do that. And they know, you know, now with the Tracker Program and other things, some of those words are getting out that it's not easy to do things here. So, we're hoping that we see some drastic improvement out of those things here. Mario?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you and your department for all the things that you do to keep us safe here in the city and the way that you are implementing those community policing models. I think it's really good that you're out in community for community events, backpack giveaways, Christmas parties. So, we thank you for that. I just wanted to know how we and others maybe can partner to identify some of these quality-of-life issues around some of our shopping areas where panhandling and drinking in public at some of these shopping centers where it should be more family-oriented, how we can address that, what types of other resources do we need to kind of, you know, maybe some of it's code enforcement, some of it is criminal. And I know that's kind of low on your priority, you know, but how can we as community members help to clean up some of those kind of shopping centers that have that kind of activity?
Okay, thank you. That's a great question. Several things. One is if you see something illegal going on, call us. Don't ever think that it's too small to call us, or we'd much rather you call us. And even if we don't get out there right away, we have a record of that, and we know there's something going on in that area. And so, if we don't get any calls, we're not going to have that information. So, calling us is important. We are doing some things to try to address those issues that have come up. We had a payback team out today to do some of those things. The biggest thing, I think, for most of the community is that when people are out panhandling, they panhandle because it's lucrative for them. And so, if you just say no and don't give them money, then it helps us because any time somebody can be in a certain place, whether it's on a street corner or in a shopping center, and get money, they're going to keep going back there until that's drained. So, if we can get people to say, "We're not going to give anything to you. We're not going to provide money." You know, if you feel like you need to give them some food or something like that, give them food rather than money. But some of these panhandlers are chronic panhandlers, and they're people that when we talk to them, they'll tell us, you know, "If you give me a ticket for panhandling, that might cost me $50, but I make $500 a day on the generosity of people in Redlands." And so, you know, when we give money to people, we do it with a good heart. We do it for good reasons, but it's not a good way to be able to do the things that we need to do to promote the type of community that we want to have. And then when folks are doing that and they're not having to work, those types of things, there's other nuisance crimes that are attached to that and related to that. So, the biggest thing is don't give them any money. You know, there are, we're meeting right now with some of the groups that are offering those services, trying to partner with them a little bit better to find a lot more long-term plan, long-term solutions to some of those problems rather than just allowing people that don't have any interest in working or don't have any interest in obeying the law to facilitate that back. to facilitate that bad behavior. So, you know, I think there's some things like that that we'll be coming out with that will help us to do that. This gentleman here, I think he has a question.
You were talking earlier about Wild Year Away and the tracking device. Go into a little more detail about how one might access that?
Sure, do you want to talk about that?
We set the program up, so all you need to do is simply Google our, go to our website, redlandspolice.org, click on the Wild Year Away program, a complete informational package there, included an application and a waiver that you sign. All you do is simply fill it out, email it back to us, we'll set up a time where you can come down and pick up either the laptop or the pouch that contains the device. If it's the pouch, you put it like, for example, on the back of your flat-screen TV. And that's simple as that. We can hibernate the device to tell it not to come alive till tomorrow at 5:00. So you pick it up today, as long as you have it in place tomorrow by 5:00, we're good to go. As soon as the, if there's, someone breaks in and makes, moves that device, any slight movement's going to set it off and it will alert us immediately through our dispatch and on our cell phones.
Let me, I should have done this at the beginning and take my question a second. Let me introduce the staff that's here. This is Lieutenant Travis Martinez, he's in charge of part of our Investigations Division. Shayna Walker is our Operations Commander here. Mike Reese is Lieutenant for Patrol. Chris Katrin is the Commander for Patrol. Sean Ryan is the Commander for Investigations. Amy is our Crime Analyst, does a great job with analyzing and predicting trends and getting out information to our troops to try to stop crime. So that has been a great addition to our department in the last year. She has a great network of people in the community, in the other areas around here, and they can get out information very, very quickly on some of these crimes that are occurring. And then that helps us and other agencies to stop those things and be aware of those things as they're occurring. So afterwards, if you want to talk to them, I'm sure that most of them will be able to stay around and talk to you. So, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Speaking of the panhandlers, we have actually even referred people to some of the community support systems that we have here in Redlands. And it seems like they're very aware of it, however, they prefer still not getting help from them, but to get money from people here. So I agree with you, it's kind of not handy out by each one. Do you feel like the early release program is part of the problems that we're having here with seeing more activity with that? Or, and then also can you tell me more about the volunteer programs that you have here and how we as a community can be involved in those?
Yeah, one of the things on the education part of that, we are currently trying to put together a campaign to educate businesses and to educate people on not giving handouts, but to give information on resources that they can attain. Once we stop, when it becomes not very lucrative for somebody to stand out in front of their shopping center or on a street corner to get money, they will go away, they'll go someplace and get the money. So that would be the first thing. On the early release part, I do think it has had an impact on Redlands. There's been a number of different things that have happened. We've seen crime go back up since realignment happened back in 2011. We've seen a regular increase in that. You can see kind of in California, the part one crime trend going down from about 2006 to that point and then going back up again. I don't think that's the only issue with that, but it has been an issue. Amy tracks our PRCS arrests for the people that are getting out on probation, parole, some kind of supervised release. And we have had a significant number of arrests related to people who are out doing those things after they get out. At the first year of that, we saw about 75% of the people we arrested that were on supervised probation were coming in from out of town and committing crime in Redlands. In the last year, that's reduced down to about 25% of people coming out.